We are having a Finance and Operations Committee meeting, by the way, Zoom. I will take the attendance. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Oden is present. Mr. Guarino cannot make it tonight. Also here is Ms. Raymond, Mr. Rodriguez from Technology, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Kinsella. So we'll go right to the agenda. And because Mr. Rodriguez is here, we're going to let him go first. So I had invited him to come to try to give us some information about broadband. I'm concerned about our students at the high school only getting an hour a week. And I want to see if there's some way we can get enough broadband in so that we can do a little bit more streaming to enhance remote learning. So I'm going to let you speak to that, Mr. Rodriguez. And thank you so much.
Thank you for having me, Ms. Oden. Ms. Kinsella, can you give me sharing abilities so I can share my presentation?
You may share.
Thank you. At the end of my Zoom icon. All right, so just get into it. So just go briefly go over what bandwidth actually is. Bandwidth is, you can look at it as kind of like a fire hose and a regular garden hose. The amount of information that has to during a certain period of time, kind of like plumbing. So you can see by the illustration on the right side of the screen, it's a garden hose, there's a low amount of water going through, whereas a fire hose has quite about, quite a lot of water going through. So you can, you can say the same thing about information going through our, our pipes, per se. So you would need an internet connection with the, with a larger amount of bandwidth so we can move data through a set period of time. And we usually, we, we use our bandwidth right now for internet. And this is just some of the things, not, it's not everything, because we do have interconnection between schools. But what we use it for is our internet, video, our phones, and some streaming right now, depending on capability. So right now, our current connection is 2 gigabits per second. And this is shared throughout the entire district, not just at the high school. So all internet right now goes through South High School. This is quite an improvement from even, I believe, three years ago, where we only had 400, 400 megabits. So we've had, that's a, that's five times the amount of bandwidth now than what we did about three, four years ago. If all, if all staff were to stream from their classrooms, there would need to be quite a significant increase in our bandwidth to support the speed. Because if we didn't do anything right now, and we did, we, we asked teachers to stream, it would cripple our operations throughout the district. So what we would need to do if we were to increase the bandwidth is to have a side-by-side connection. And speaking with our E-Ray consultant and Comcast, who is our current provider, we couldn't just increase the bandwidth with our current connection because of how E-Ray is set up. So it is a little bit more complicated than just turning on a switch to increase internet. So it doesn't, it's not free. I'll be, I'll be definitely the first to say that. I'm sure Mr. Donovan would be the second to say it. To, to increase the, the internet, we would need certain devices that, that would probably be a one-time thing. So because we already have our current internet pipe supporting on our, supported on our course, which these, these items right here, $25,000, would only be needed for the duration of remote learning, because we wouldn't need to support it after that. So the biggest expenses for this are this Cisco Expansion Modules for our fiber. And that would be expansion slots for our SFP Plus. So that's pretty much, just in layman's terms, that's what our fiber plugs into on, on our switch coming in. So without that, this, this would be a difficult thing to achieve if, if we didn't have these certain devices that we would, that we need to increase our bandwidth.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Do you need one of those Cisco devices for each school?
Nope. It would just need to be at South High School.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Well, if we're also going to talk about streaming, we also need to talk about what, what is needed in the classroom. Because not every teacher has the capability of, of streaming. So for each stream, and this is just doing a quick search, each, each teacher would take up a minimum of 2 megabits per second. So, and if, if we're asking a, a lot of teachers throughout the district, that would definitely clog up our pipe right now with our 2 gigabits per second, depending on how many are at the same time. However, we still have to think about current district operations, our phone systems, our current internet, how that impacts our backups, all the other things that go on that, that would have to be on the side of what we're doing right now. So teachers would also need to have high-gain DSLR microphones close by to really achieve streaming in their classroom. If they're going to teach assignments on a whiteboard, because if they have a laptop just in their room, it's, it's, that, it's definitely not sufficient when picking up sound. So if I'm in a larger room, like a classroom, and I'm talking to the class via my laptop, the microphone isn't powerful enough. These are, you know, it, it's made for, you know, being on a desk and being from 1 to 3 feet away from that computer. So, and if a, if a teacher would like, you know, to be at a distance while speaking at the board and writing, the webcam and the microphone would need to be so far away to one to see the, the actual board and the teacher, and to have the microphone be close enough so they can actually hear the, the teacher speak. So there, there is a little bit more involved than, than just the increase in bandwidth. So with the amount of teachers we have in district, I, I, I think it'd be a disservice if we were just going to supply it to the high schools and post everybody else. So that's just a little food for thought. And we have our current video streaming service, or, or streaming services we use right now, the most popular ones are Zoom and Google. And since our implementation of Office 365 through Microsoft, we can now use Team, which is also a popular alternative to Zoom and Google. Microsoft has a very robust suite of tools that students could use. Again, with what we're facing with the Chromebooks, we have equipment shortages for cameras, microphones, and throughout the country. It's not just Nashville who's, who's, who's thinking about doing this. So we have to take that into consideration moving forward. So costs from Comcast. So Comcast obviously would charge us for increased bandwidth. So this would, this would be the yearly cost if we were to increase it, our speeds from a 4 gig here, and a 6 gig here, and an 8 gig here. Obviously, the more bandwidth you have, the better. And the least amount of opportunity for anything to come crashing to a halt. The, these, you know, as you can see, it's close to $90,000 just, just for a year to make this happen, including the one time. You know, this is assuming we're going to go back to normal, you know, hopefully within the next year. So just, just the increased internet speeds and the modules that would be needed on our switch, not including the classroom stuff, we're looking at around 110,000, 115,000 to do that. So these are just, these are just some thoughts I'm just giving you right there. So that is the conclusion of what I have to say.
Ms. Raymond, go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the cost to equip the teachers, I know you said that you felt it would be a disservice to only do the high school teachers. I agree, there's a question of parity. However, I'm interested to know, because I don't know off the top of my head, how many teachers we have at each level? You know, and I'm wondering also if we could, you know, equip, like what the cost would be to equip the high schools, and then maybe have a number of shared pieces of equipment for the elementary schools, like equip high school and middle school, but then have sharing in the, the elementary schools? Or if that's even reasonable? I'm just thinking that elementary kids are in our plan, having more face-to-face contact with their teachers. So anybody know exactly how many teachers we have?
I think we have 1,300 teachers. Is that around?
I think it's even about 1,000.
Yeah, we have 1,000 teachers.
But we don't know off the top of our heads the breakdown by grade level.
I don't have my budget book with me. I have that at home, so.
Yeah, mine is way on the other side of the house right now.
And I would say, looking at that, we, there are some teachers that probably wouldn't need it. I think everybody would like it. I'm, I'm very concerned about our core subjects, reading, math, writing. I think those are critical. Certainly, I would like to see music and art and FZed, but I think we have to prioritize in what we're, just like we prioritized in what we're doing with remote learning. So, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So the total cost of upgrading and getting all this is going to be how much?
Just, just with the Comcast's, if we would do the 8 gig and then the modules, roughly 110,000 to 115,000 for one, for let's say a year. We have to commit a year to Comcast. That's, that's a given. So we can't just do a month-by-month thing. So there has to be a year. And the speed tiers, I mean, the, the cost goes down, the, the amount of commitment you give. So if it's two to three years, then the cost does go down, but it's not like a significant reduction. It's just the, just with anything like a regular cable contract that we all have.
And Mr. Donovan, where are we getting the money? What account? Was this a one-time with the CARES Act?
Well, that would be, I guess, the possible solution. I, I, this is not in the budget or in, in even the CARES Act. This is something that's, that's just been brought up.
I, I asked for it, Paula. I, I just wanted to see what it was going to cost, if it was a possibility. I, I think it certainly would help for remote learning. So they were good enough to, I had asked if we could have some idea of what it would cost. And my understanding of this, probably 110,000 to 115,000, that would just be the high school, Greg? Would that be the district?
That would be the district. That's just connection. That's not everything else. And we had to, like I said, we keep in mind is that there is a shortage in webcams. And since there is a shortage, that means the price of webcams are higher at the moment, just because of supply and demand. So that's, it's just, it's just stuff to think about. Yeah.
So on the high end of what you said, about $40 for a microphone and 70 for a webcam, that's another 110-ish to equip all teachers. And we probably wouldn't be able to do that. So that's 225, 225,000 to, assuming we could get the equipment to equip all of our teachers in their classrooms. We're not talking about anything at home.
Right. And that, and that's a, you know, that's a worry too. I'm not, I, I don't want to use any features and bring in any equipment home, but it's just, you know, it happens. Stuff gets lost. You know, these are, are, we're looking at these as more of a, at least I'm looking at as more of a one-time expense for, you know, to, to make it happen. I understand, I totally understand the need for it. But I think, what do we do with these after, is my concern?
Yes, I'm wondering, is there maybe some way we could have a specific room set up rather than every room for teachers? And if a teacher had something they wanted to share with their class, they could go into that room with the webcam and microphone and be able to stream that. Can it be recorded? Can be recorded, can it? So kids could watch it at different times?
It, it's possible, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I just wanted to get-
Hold on, Ms. Raymond has something. I'm sorry.
Yep. I, I just wanted to get some idea here. Heather?
Thanks. I'm just thinking about, we have in the South High School, the television studio. And I don't know if that is a possibility for people to use. But I'm also wondering if we have any classrooms equipped already as part of the CTE program. So that might be just something to think about. And then also, you know, if we're talking about having teachers sign out the equipment, then we have to think about, or sign out the room where the equipment would be, say, in each, each school, then we'd have to talk about what's the proper way to sanitize this type of equipment so that there isn't any cross-contamination with germs?
Yeah, I would think there's probably, the room idea might be an idea in middle and high school. I, I don't think there's a room in an elementary school, each school, where you could do this. There are already pretty squished for space. So I don't think that idea would work at the elementary school, maybe at the upper, the secondary level.
Okay, well, we got some figures, we got some ideas, and we got an idea of the cost. And I, I think that was important. And Greg, I just want to thank you for doing that for us. Certainly is expensive and, you know, maybe if we had to do it year-round, every year, it might be looked at differently. But if it's one year, or we don't know how long this is going to be, we'll have to look at it maybe a little bit differently. And we'll have to look at where the money would come from, what we would have to give up in order to pay for this. So, but I, I just want to thank you immensely for doing this work for us.
Oh, no problem. I think it challenges all of us to be a little bit creative in how we teach, learn, and do our operations. So, you know, I learned something today just even putting this together. So I, if, I think that's also good.
Okay, well, thanks. Heather?
Thank you. So can, can this information be shared with Mr. Parker and the administrative teams at the high schools and the middle schools? Because I really think that, at the end of the day, they're the ones who are working on getting the remote details hammered out. They really have the pulse on what teachers are, are asking for and what, you know, classes make sense for this, and have them kind of get back to us about what they would like for the ability to stream or not. Because I think it's a brilliant idea, and I think we should do it. But I have never stood up in front of a class before, so I don't actually know what the teachers would want.
Yeah, we can certainly share that with Mr. Parker and his, his crew.
And Dr. Mc, no, Dr. McKinney. It's only secondary.
I mean, and we could, certainly, I wouldn't exclude Dr. McKinney from it. But at the same time, I really think we're talking about some of foundational stuff. I don't know. I still don't know how you teach your kid to read and do simple math over Zoom. So maybe they would want something at the elementary level. I don't know.
I have an idea about it, but not now playing. Okay, well, Greg, thank you so much. I honestly appreciate your, your work in this. I, I think it's valuable, at least. I think we have to overturn every stone to make sure we're doing what's best for our kids. Anything less is not fair to them. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
You have a good evening.
All right, you too. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now, Mr. Donovan, we can get to our regular. And thank you, everybody, for letting Mr. Rodriguez go first. He wasn't originally on the agenda, and I had asked for this. So I just wanted to let him go as, as quickly as possible. So the first thing on the agenda is the bus contract.
Okay, if you recall, I believe it was the last Finance and Ops meeting, this, this group approved the pricing, approved the RFP, and then you directed me to go negotiate with First Student on the contract, which I did, working with Dave Rossio. For the most part, the contract that's presented to you tonight is pretty much what the contract was previously. I will highlight, highlight what I consider to be the significant changes. The first one is Section 5, where it's fuel. Previously, we had a clause in there that if fuel reached a certain level, and this is, the bus runs on diesel fuel, I believe it was $3.85, that once it reached that certain level, we would pitch in and help pay for the fuel if it increased above that. So we talked about that quite a bit, went back and forth. First student, with, with the point being that if, if the price went way down, we should also share in the saving. First student came back and basically said, you know what? Why don't we just worry about the fuel? If it goes down, they win. If it goes up, they lose. It's really not something that we have any expert on at the school district as far as the price of, of diesel fuel. And the other thing is the, the, First Student is a large multinational corporation. They have experts in this. They buy the fuel in advance. They sign future contracts and things like that. So I think, so I, I, I agree that we should just keep what's in there for Section 5, which is fuel is on them going forward.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, and the other section that has some significant changes is Section 10. Now, Section 10 is force majeure, which is a, a section of most contracts, and it talks about if, if things happen beyond anybody's control, fire, riot, war, things like that. Different, different items get put in there. But this language is written mainly because of the pandemic we're going through now. So basically, 10.1 added a little sentence at the bottom, excusing the contractor if it's beyond their control, which isn't something that, something that you find fairly typically. And then I said, well, I'd also want language to sort of protect the district, not just contractor. And that's basically what you see in, in Section 2 and 3. Now, we did talk about pricing and said, do we want to put that in the contract? Or assuming that we, you know, go remote again? There were a lot of complicating factors to that. So we decided, and it's mentioned in Section 10.3, that if, if this were to happen, and for more than two weeks, we turned into a remote school again, so let's say it happens in the middle of November and goes through the rest of the 2021 school year, that we would sit down and negotiate with them. If we couldn't meet an agreement, then either party could simply terminate the contract. The hope is that that's not what would happen. Bus drivers are a key component to our whole school district. They are a, you know, they're not employees of the district, but they do provide services that are quite important to us running our district. So we like to try to work with First Student on these types of issues. So I think this language sort of covers both parties. It covers them, it covers, and it covers us in case of long-term issues where students would not be in school if we're long-term remote or issues like that. And the other significant item is Appendix C, which is the last page. We had put in there some contract performance language. Whereas if they don't have regular drivers, if they are late on a constant basis, if they miss trips, then there are dollar amounts assigned to these. Now, I would suggest to you, we're not going to sit there and check every single day to see if a, a bus was 15 minutes late or not. It would be more of a thing if it, if it were a regular occurrence where it was causing frustration and delays in the whole system. So this language is in there. We hope to never have to use it, but they did agree to put it in. And I think it would be something that would be helpful to us in the long run. So those are the three main item changes to the contract. The rest are, you know, a sentence here and there, but the gist of the contract is about the same.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So in Section 10, I'm going to go back to that, with the 14-day calendars, and we can, if we can come to an agreement, we can terminate the contract. What would happen again if, in fact, we're shut down? Would we be responsible to pay the employees again?
No.
Okay. So if we shut down for any long period of time, we will not be paying the employees this time?
It, it would be up to us. We would make that decision. As you recall, in the spring, the board decided to pay all employees. So we reached out to First Student, and they agreed if we paid 80% of the contract rate, that they would continue to pay all their bus drivers, and they did that. So I'm not sure we're going to do that as we go back to start the year. And I'm not sure we're going to do that, assuming, let's say, mid-November, we go to remote for the rest of the year. So this, this provides us flexibility.
Okay, and I think there was another question. On Exhibit A, what was I, and Appendix B? Okay, that's it. Now, these prices per hour, these are reflecting on full buses running full-time or only half buses running half-time?
No, this is a, this is a, it's got nothing to do with how many students are on the bus. This is the cost per day to run a bus. So this assumes, most, every bus we have runs three routes in the morning and three routes in the afternoon. So this assumes this would cover that price. If we don't run a bus, then we don't have to pay that rate if we don't run the bus. Now, we can't suddenly drop from 88 buses down to 44 buses at the drop of a hat. But if we do our routes and realize we don't need three of those buses, then we could just drop that, and then we wouldn't pay that cost on that bus.
When do we have to let First Student know how many buses we're going to need for the beginning of the year? When, is it going to be when we tally up how many people want to go remote and how many are going hybrid?
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah, typically, we would know around now, but this year being the odd year that it is, they're well aware they won't find out until we find out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Oden. Ms. Oden, can I ask my question?
I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted.
Thank you. I just have a question on field trips. Is that a change from previous years? I don't anticipate we're going to have field trips for a while, but out of curiosity, because I feel like there was discussion at one point about field trips being like a minimum charge per day, and this shows an hourly rate.
Yeah, we've had different ways of doing it. The previous contract, they would charge us when they left the terminal until they returned to the terminal. The new contract says they will charge us when they get to the school and return to the school.
Right.
One of the big frustrations for teachers was, well, this was a four-hour trip, and then they find out, no, it was closer to five because the bus driver was going back and forth to the terminal. So, we said, why don't we just fix the pricing? We can, and we did also last year, we sort of tried to do some fixed price costs for trips to Concord or places that were done commonly. And we could do that again if we want, but it's not in the contract, but I'm sure they'd work with us on that if we wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I remember, what is Nature Preserve out in Hollis?
Beaverbrook?
Yeah, that was one of the things. I heard some teachers complain about the price to take the class to Beaverbrook. It seemed exorbitant compared to what they had paid in the past. Have you heard any complaints about that?
Not recently, but remember that the bus drivers are now, they got an increase in pay and their reunion, so it's $25 an hour. They pay the bus driver, so. I think some of the teachers been around for a while. We used to pay an $18 an hour for a field trip, and that doesn't even cost, cover the cost of the bus driver anymore.
Okay.
So, yeah, costs have certainly increased for that. I think what the teachers need to do is understand the cost, and if they're reaching out to the PTO or asking parents for funds, they need to, you know, instead of $3, maybe it's going to be $4.
Okay, okay, thank you. I did have a question on appendix C. On the top part, routes being completed without a two-way bus radio, that was a performance issue. Have there been instances of that? Is that in there for a particular reason or just to cover things?
Yeah, no, it's in there because the previous terminal manager, we had lots of problems with that terminal manager, where whenever a new bus came in, it didn't seem to be able to understand that with a new bus, you need to assign a radio to it. So, for two to three years in a row, we had lots of problems. There is a new terminal manager. He's on his, I think he's been there two years or a year and a half now. We haven't had that issue. It's funny that you mention that, Dottie, because they suggested, oh, that won't happen anymore with Sean working there, so. And I'm going, yeah, but you had like three years in a row where it did happen, so why don't we just keep it?
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay, but if we did have an issue on a bus and they didn't have a two-way radio on there, it could be a big problem, so.
Yes, it could. Could be a big safety issue, yes.
Yes, I appreciate you making sure that's in there. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I'm going to look for a motion. Do we have a motion to accept the bus contract that Mr. Donovan has negotiated with First Student?
So moved.
Okay. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Passed unanimously. I don't think I need to say Heather, seeing where we had two votes, yeah, okay.
No, I believe because you have a quorum without me. I'm just addressing this evening.
Well, thank you for coming. You're more than window dressing. Okay, moving on to First Church contract.
Now, we got one more, bus ticket cost.
Oh, oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
That's okay. As you're probably aware, we charge high school students for busing. It's not required by law that we bus high school students, but we do. And years ago, I don't know how long ago, but it's been many years, we started charging high school students that are not on free and reduced lunch, $65 a year for bus transportation. So, that question has come up with our new plan from a few people. So, it should really be approved by the board whether we charge or not. At this point, we sort of, based on what the rules are, we should charge. But based upon the spring, based upon us starting late, based upon students going maybe one or two days, depending on what level they are, I'm suggesting that maybe we waive any bus fee for at least the first semester of this school year. And then maybe if we go back in second semester, we could charge the half-rate, which is what we do anyway. If someone comes halfway through the year, we charge them a half. But personally, I think it's sort of unfair to charge people for something that they're probably not going to be able to get to use, or if they use it, it'll only be a day or two. So, I think this would be a temporary thing, just for this first half of the school year, and maybe continue into the rest of the year. That's up to the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So, my question really is, is that the students that paid for the whole year last year, the $65, do we know exactly, well, we have to have a list of who paid, right? Of the students that paid for the full year? I think anybody who paid for the full year last year since they didn't get to use the bus, I don't think we should be charging them for the first several months of this year. And probably, I mean, how many other students are probably going to be buying a bus pass at this time? So, I would probably say until we know what's going on the first several months, and maybe review this in, when are we really starting school in October? Is it really getting up and running? I'm all confused with the dates when we're doing all this. If I'm confused, everybody else has got to be confused out there. So, let's say October, November, December. Why don't we revisit this at the beginning of January?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I don't want to charge anybody who paid last year, and they, you know, it's either, they can ask us for a refund, or we just let it go. And at the beginning of the year, we can revisit it and see with the students that paid last year again. That's all.
Can I follow that up? I know this is a little different, but is parking the same? Are we, because I remember we got a question from a parent about parking.
Yeah, what we did with parking, high school students, obviously, juniors and seniors for the most part, we refunded them the second semester.
Okay.
So, all those students got back their second semester. If you remember Stephen Norris, who's one of our board reps, it was one of the things that he was moving forward with. So, I'll give him credit for sticking with it because it took a while to figure out how to do it. We had to make every single person a one-time vendor. But we did, and we paid those. It probably didn't get paid until late May or June, but they did get, they did get refund.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Johnson, I'm looking for a motion to what you wanted to bring forward.
Okay, I move that we do not charge any students' bus fees of the $65. Right, I'm trying to figure out how to word this. There'll be no fees charged for any bus passes from when school starts until January, till December 31st, and we will revisit this from January of 2021.
Okay. I'll second that. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, passed unanimously. Karen, did you happen to write that down, or did you write that down?
I didn't. I was hoping Heather was, but I can.
Heather, I know you're a note taker. Heather, did you get that motion down?
I didn't. No, I didn't. But, I mean, the motion was to not charge any bus fees.
Until?
No, I'm sorry, not charge any of the $65 bus fees through December 31st, 2020, and to revisit the question in January 2021.
Right.
Correct? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, just to throw my two cents in there, I think that's eminently reasonable. You know, I think the district will take a little hit, but we can't ask families to pay for riding the bus in one day a week. That's, I just don't think it's reasonable, or two days a week.
I agree with you. Okay, so we've dealt with that. Now, the First Church contract.
Okay, First Church contract. This is for our Title I preschool program. We have been at the First Church, which if you don't know where it is, is on the top of the hill at Main Street, right near the, just past the Hunt Building. So, we've had a relationship with this church for a long time. We use up to five classrooms for the Title I preschool program. Excuse me, and we have some office space for the secretary and the director who run that program. They're looking for a small increase. The contract is exactly the same as it's been the last three to five years, except the rate is higher. The rate is $480 higher than it was last year. That's a little bit less than 1%. I think they just rounded wrong. I think the plan was to make it 1%, but either way, let's just round it off, call it a 1% increase. The cost for this does come from Title I. The one issue that was discussed, and the church didn't necessarily want to put it in the contract, was what if we end up going remote? Would be, would, if we signed the contract, would we be required to pay it for the rest of the year? The church says yes, where they're allowing us use of the space, and they would like to be compensated for the full year, whether we use it for the full year or not. Other than that, I think to get this program back up and running, we don't have lots of other options this year to put these students. Maybe that will change as the year goes on, but at this point, that's kind of the status of everything.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Well, that was going to be my question. If our students have to go remote, we're paying for space that we're not using. And I am concerned with that. And how many students are in each class?
I believe there's 12 to 15, I think.
And what is the game plan at this point with reopening the Title I? Was Title I going to go back and we were going to socially distance them, or they're not going to go back at all to begin with?
Yeah, they're, at this point, they're going to be treated like the other elementary programs, where they will return in October.
They return. So, we're paying this contract some September 15th, but they return in October, and then we don't know what's going to happen if we get, if we shut down the school district again, then we're paying them for services that were, space that we're not using. I think this is a great program, don't get me wrong, Title I. But I think there needs to be a little bit of flexibility in here that if it's beyond our control, we're still paying for students not to be in a classroom.
I understand that. That's exactly how I felt, I think. But if you were to, you know, rent an apartment in Boston and sign a year lease, and then leave halfway through, you know, you'd still be expected to pay it. So, I think that's kind of how the church is looking at it, like you want to take this space for a year. I guess we could reach out and say, would you be willing to do a month-to-month lease? That might be more expensive. I'm not sure they'd do that or not. But I guess those are kind of the other options. You know, I did, working with the Title I director, I did have her reach out to them and say, what if, and sort of the what if was, what if by the end of this calendar year, we're out of school for the rest of the year, we're remote the rest of the year? Can we get some sort of a break? And the response back was, the contract that you're looking at. So, the answer was basically no.
Well, we paid them for the whole time that they weren't in school before, from March until June, so they got paid for that, and nothing was being used. And now, you know, I guess if you rent an apartment, you're not going to leave because of COVID-19. You're kind of stuck in there for lockdown if that was to happen, God forbid again. This is something that we're sending our kids to Title I, and if we have to take them out of school again, then we're not using the space, and they already got paid from March until, well, they've gotten paid from March until September without the space being used. So, that's quite a bit of money that they've gotten with nobody being there. So, that was kind of like easy money for them. That's just my opinion. I think, like I said, I think it's a good program. But, I mean, given the circumstances that are beyond our control, I was, you would think that they may be a little bit more flexible and see how everything rolls out. Like I said, they got paid. We paid them the bill, even when nobody's, no kids were in school, and they're going to get paid right up till September with nobody. So, I don't know. I have a hard time with this, voting on this. Thank you.
I guess for me, I'd like to see these kids back in school. These are young kids that need the social experience, some of their academics that will prepare them for success in the primary grades, which is critical to reading, some of the math. I don't know what the space is like, if they could socially distance there. I do know that if the kids aren't there, they'll save on some heat. I don't know if their insurance goes up when one student's there. But do you think you might be able to go back to them, Mr. Donovan, and see if we're not there, if they could give us some type of a break on the lease?
I can certainly do that, yeah.
Would you?
Sure. Like I said, I did it originally through the Title I director, and then I spoke to the property manager for the church, and then I said, okay, I will bring forward your request to the board, get their view and opinion, and then I will respond back. So, I think I've heard from you and what you'd like to do, and I can certainly do it.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay, next on the agenda is the Clearway contracts.
Yes. Okay, Clearway Adult Learning Center. So, we did have a discussion on this previously with the board. So, basically, Marsha Bagley and I met with them a week or so ago. We discussed some of the items we had discussed with the board and mentioned some concerns. They agreed to a few things, one of which was to add an addendum to the contract, which was provided by Ms. Bagley. It's in the contract package. It's right behind the two contracts. It says National School District Expectations of a Private Provider of Special Education. So, that's in the contract. We're expecting that to be followed, and they said they would follow that. And we shall see, but that. And we shall see, but that, they, they didn't seem too concerned about it. Um, we then mentioned that we would like to reduce the number of slots for the, uh, special education students from fifteen down to ten for this coming school year. Um, and they thought about that and said, okay, would it be all right if they increased the number of slots for the typical students, the other program, from fifty to fifty-five? So I said, fine, that would be fine. We would drop five from one and increase five in the other. Um, so that was done, but interestingly enough, the pricing was also changed. So if you think about it, the cost per special ed student was twenty-something thousand dollars a year. The cost for typical student was five thousand nine hundred dollars a year, last year. Um, so they did come back with the new contracts, which are the ones you have here. So basically, what they've effectively done is instead of fifty slots at five thousand nine oh-two, which totaled two hundred and ninety-five thousand rounding last year. This year's request is the fifty-five slots that we mentioned at six thousand two hundred per student. And that's a total of three hundred and forty-one thousand. That's an increase in that piece of the contract. But keep in mind, it's really a two-piece contract. But that piece of the contract is an increase above forty-six thousand of fifteen percent. Um, then for the special ed students, we had fifteen last year. And we paid a little over twenty thousand dollars, or three hundred and seven thousand. This year, we're paying for ten slots, but the price went from twenty thousand up to twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight thousand. Um, so the difference there is a decrease in the special ed program of twenty-eight thousand. So the net in both contracts is an increase of about seventeen thousand, which is an increase of, I think, two-point-nine percent. Um, so basically, what it does show is that for the Adult Learning Center to run the typical student program, they need the linkage with the special ed program. Or these, or these prices wouldn't have all changed. They, they put the two together to run the program. Um, so that's fine, I'm just making people aware that that's, that's what they're doing. Um, and like I said, we have had some issues around some of the special ed stuff in the past. But if we move ahead the following year with this, then I think we really need to sit down sooner rather than later and sort of lay out what the real costs are. To run one of the, one of the program. So, um, that's, that's kind of where we are with them. Um, I think most people feel that the typical student program is important. We do have students that plan, special ed students that plan on attending there. It's mid-August now. My suggestion is we, we approve these contracts and then continue to work with them during the year to say, okay, what are gonna be the expectations going forward?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, with this program, are these kids going to be back in the school? Are they gonna be running on what the district is? Or are they gonna be remoting hybrid? Because this is a whole separate, the special ed kids are a whole separate, different breed than regular ed. And so what are we doing here with Clearway? Is anybody going back, or they're gonna be remote or hybrid?
They, they plan on trying the hybrid like we are. Um, and if that is not safe, um, then they will move back to a remote model. They, like us in the spring, did switch to a remote, a remote model. Um, but they do plan on trying to hybrid to start.
You know what I would like really from them is I'd like to know how many of the special ed students were able to remote and how many really had a hard time remoting. And I guess some of the other students too, because, um, some of these students, it's the attention span. And I, I'm just kind of curious how they were able to adjust to the remote. And I, I'd like to kind of also maybe hear the plan from, um, the Adult Learning Center Clearway. And how they, with the hybrid, on how they're going to have these kids adjust coming into the program. And what exactly is their hybrid gonna look like? Is it gonna look like ours? Because again, you've got kids that, that have problems with the learning, the attention span on some of these students. Some of these students are just about, you know, this is for kids that couldn't handle the high school, and we've got them in a smaller setting. And I just like to know if they feel that, how they're going to progress with all this. And I think this is important as we're signing a new contract in the year that, of all this uncertainty for some of these students. That it really weighs a lot on them and their learning piece. So I will support this contract because I do believe that Clearway is a good school and it helps a lot of students that need that smaller setting and more one-to-one at times. But I'd like to hear what their plan is a little bit with the upcoming school year. And I think it's, it's really important that we as a board, since we're paying them and they're outside the realm of the rest of the district. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond, do you have anything you wanna, okay? Um, I, I would just like to say, I think it's an important program for some of our kids. It's a, a savior. Uh, I think they do excellent work over there. I'm, I'm glad there is an increase for the regular ed students. I, I just wanna ask, uh, do you think, or do you have the numbers that show that we probably could use the five extra slots for regular ed students? Mr. Donovan?
I. Maybe, I honestly don't know, um.
Okay.
That would be a better question probably for the high school principals, but.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
But we've been, we've been running at about fifty, and at times, it's, it's up close to the fifty number, so.
Okay. At this point in the year, we're getting close to when we wanna go back, even though it's remote. I, I think we need to approve the contract and, uh, see what we can iron out for future contracts. Uh, but they did reduce the number of special ed. What did you say? It was fifteen? I was thinking we had eighteen spots over there.
No, it was, it was fifteen, and now it's ten.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract for Clearway for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
I'll move.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden is yes, and the motion passes unanimously. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the fiscal year twenty forecast.
Okay, so this will be the last forecast you get until next April. Um, we'll be reviewing the financial statements each month, but an official forecast. Um, I'm not sure if you could read through all the detail that I had, had, had sent over. Um, rather a large spreadsheet, and sometimes it's, it's hard to read. Um, but just to sort of give you a, a final breakdown here, sort of where we are. We're just about closed, um, for the year. Um, last, the last week or so, we went through, reviewed all the outstanding purchase orders, closed any we could close. Um, if the item was still waiting to be received, we did keep the purchase order open, so the funds are still encumbered. But we cleaned out any open purchase orders or things that didn't have a specific item assigned to. Um, so that process is done, we have reviewed all the invoices. And, um, we've made all the entries, except for one, uh, for the year-end, um, teachers' pay. Because keep in mind, teachers are paid through the summer, but it's for work related to last school year. So we need to get those costs in, so we've made that, that accrual. There's a couple little things left to do, it's really not gonna affect this too, too much. But if you look down at the bottom of that spreadsheet, if it's legible to you, um, it shows, uh, that the total, that we actually overran the budget by one-point-two million, but that's not the case. Um, because the FICA, the Medicaid, the pension and the benefits, those get assigned to our budget by the city. There were accruals or estimates of what they expect the cost to be. If they overaccrue, we don't get to spend the money. If they underaccrue, which they did this year, uh, by a total of like one-point-seven million, um, that, that goes back to the city. And they will make that adjustment at the city level when they get all the data, uh, all those accounts back from the various budgets. So when you, when you move those costs back out, it shows a remaining of about five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand that we have over budget. Now, what is left to go in? We have about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars of out-of-district invoices that have not been processed yet. Um, and the reason for that is that they, they're over that budget line. So for the last few weeks, we've just sort of kept them in limbo. We're gonna be moving those costs in. If it wasn't done today, it'll be done in the next few days. Um, so that will leave, uh, a excess of about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. Um, so as you remember, we did spend probably about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand of, of the excess back in May, when I mentioned how we'd be over a million dollars. Um, as it turned out, there were, some of the summer teachers had already finished their year early. They weren't continued to get paid, so my estimate there was a little conservative. Um, and when we closed out purchase orders, there were a number of purchase orders that they had the funds encumbered, and then they didn't spend all those funds, so it came back in. So it is two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, that money officially does go back to the city. Um, but keep in mind, we also, on the revenue side of the fence, we were well below what we expected in revenues. Um, due to the change, the Medicaid funds, we expected about one-point-seven million, we only brought in about four-hundred thousand dollars. Um, we paid back the parking from the high school students. We had to pay back money to the PayPal parents that pay to send their children. So on the revenue side, we're well below budget. So when you look at both pieces of it, um, I, I don't think sending back, uh, that amount is necessarily a bad thing in a very strange year. Um, and the, the other thing is, we are looking at, working with the city financial, uh, department, looking at a new budgeting software. Um, and I'm hoping that some of this excess can be used to purchase, uh, that new budgeting software. I think especially for this forecasting piece, which I do every spring, with a new, uh, software, a new model, that we can be much, much more accurate as the year goes on, and it won't be this constant challenge to try to, uh, come up with an accurate number. So, um, though it's a little more than you might want it to be, I think, in, in a very odd year, I still think it's reasonable, and, um, I don't think there were any items that, uh, we did not buy this year. Um, due to budget issues, so. Um, that is my final summary on fiscal year twenty-one's budget.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, on to the transfer report, which is fairly thin this month.
Yes, that's the good thing about July. Not much in the way of transfers for July. I was actually kind of surprised we had three. Um, so the first one is a budget adjustment at CTE. Um, where they're simply moving accounts, they're taking it from their supply account, and they're putting it into, uh, the services. This is laundry services for the, uh, students that take the culinary program. Are we gonna need it? Who knows, but if we do, it's fair. Um, the second one is a, is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, if you, if you recall, a few weeks ago, we approved one-point-four million or so of the one-time funds. Um, this a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is the money that curriculum's using for the middle school Amplify Science. So when reaching out to the city, uh, the legislation was prepared. The letter was sent to the Board of Alderman requesting those one-time funds, the one-point-four million that the Board of Ed approved. That's just gonna take a little bit of time. By the time they have to go through, and it has to go through their process, they only meet once a month in the summer. So those funds will not be transferred back to us until September, when they've gone through their process. And then we'll simply replace these funds when those come in. So this was just, it was an easy account. I took it from the heating gas, knowing there won't be any costs in there to speak of, uh, in the first three months. So that's, that's what that is, and the last one is, um, the technology department just moving from contracted services to conferences. And that's for the, uh, Google Classroom training that, uh, they'll be giving to teachers.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, and off to the financial report for.
Okay, you probably should have do, just approved that, cause it has over one large entry in there.
Right, right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the transfer report for July twenty-twenty. Okay, and Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, pass unanimously. So we can put that on the consent agenda. Okay, and last, we have the financial report for the district for July twenty-twenty.
Okay, I'll run through this quickly, as July is the first month of the year. Um, we're at five-point-one-seven percent spent. Um, obviously, a lot of people aren't getting paid yet, so it's, it's a very slow start to the year from a spending point of view. Um, so therefore, salaries and wages are much lower than you would see in a typical month. Um, and, uh, you know, other than that, um, if you look at the rental line, the five-four-eight-nine-nine, you'll notice, uh, Karen expended is a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. Uh, that's just the way, basically, we set up to pay the Brentwood rent. We set up an ACH. They don't get paid the rent every single month, but we set it up for it to happen automatically. So we don't have to pay late fees, and the way it records in this report is it shows up as if we've sent them all the money. We haven't, we've only sent them the first month, but that's why that number's higher. Um, dues and memberships is twenty-one thousand, uh, and most of that is for the Board of Ed, um, joining the, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association. And I think for Assistant Superintendent joining. And, um, if you look at the, the last page, you look at the computer equipment, you'll notice a significant spend on the computer software line. That happens every year. Most all of our softwares are annual subscriptions. We pay for them in July for the year. So you, you'll see in, in July and in August, significant, almost that whole line is spent each year, the first two months. And the capital lease, that's the, the last payment on the copiers before we move to the new ones. And, uh, that's actually due August first, I think, each year, and so that was paid in July. So other than that, nothing too exciting, first month of the year. Things look fine at this.
That's all good news. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to accept the, do we have to make a motion to accept the financial report?
I don't think so. Usually, we just put it in the consent agenda.
Okay, okay, we'll put that in the consent agenda. Were there any questions or comments? No, and, uh, from looking at the agenda, I think we, we might have finished that. Ms. Johnson, you have your.
Yes, I just wanna ask Mr. Donovan a question. Um, with the Chromebooks that we're gonna be purchasing, giving out again, um, are we gonna be able to see, um, the page with the signature that's gonna be worded, edited, that so people have accountability and gonna be held accountable? So we don't get the destruction back like we did again and ask taxpayers? So we don't get the destruction back like we did again and ask taxpayers to pay for this?
Yes. I have, I spent some time talking to Mr. Rodriguez earlier in the, at the end of last week, I believe. The number of, of the Chromebooks, that 500 number has gone way, way down. The reality is, each of the Chromebooks that were given out were pretty much the school's Chromebooks. So Mr. Rodriguez tried to organize it best he could, but it's really each individual school who gave out the Chromebooks. I think what he's looking at is it's necessarily their job to get them back. We'll obviously be very careful. We won't give a Chromebook to anybody that didn't return their Chromebook. So nobody will get two Chromebooks. We have received back, I think it's in the low 20s as far as the number that were destroyed in a significant way that we would need to fix or replace. And we will reach out to City Risk Department to get those covered. I do realize that's all our tax money. But I think the tot, when we're all done with this, I think the total number, I would like to see the number by school. See what happened, what we didn't get back and what was sort of destroyed by school. So we have a, a better, a better detail. But I think you're going to have to probably wait another month or so until we get all that data. But to your specific question, can you see that page? Sure, I can ask for it. I don't have it myself, but I can certainly ask for it.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, and I second that. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. And thank you, Ms. Raymond, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I was right on.